...there, items A through F. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
Submit.
Thank you, Lori.
Second.
Thank you, Laura Lai. Pardon me. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda items, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Stephanie, would you note my extension?
And mine.
Very good, so two extensions. Okay, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to difference makers. National Institute.
Yes, each month we recognize folks that are making a difference. Bottom line, hopefully we're making decisions that's what's best for kids and everything that we do. And we have a lot of folks, a lot of stakeholders, many of you. All of you, by you being here, we're all in this together. So we want to recognize some folks that are making a difference. We have three pillars, that everything we do goes back to learning, partnership, and stewardship. So we try to recognize folks that are making a difference in those respective areas. So in the learning pillar, I believe Gary Versloys and Zach Dugans, you'll be introducing one of our difference makers tonight in our learning. Ms. Haley Fisher.
Mostly Zach.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Zach Dugans. I'm a counselor at J C A C and I am Haley's mentor. Ms. Fisher here started with J C A C this year, Jefferson City Academic Center. However, she performs as if she has been here for years. Ms. Fisher maintains a positive attitude and is very passionate about student concerns, student success, and the success of J C A C. She makes an effort to establish relationships with students and support their individual needs. She realizes that as a counselor, my apologies, she has a vast role in students' lives and encompasses many different responsibilities. We're very grateful for the time and effort she puts forth assisting students to be safe and successful in their education and their life. I've worked with her assisting students that were in dire situations as she performs above and beyond my expectations. I value her responsiveness and attention to detail.
Okay. Well, thank you. We'd like to... Well, I was... One thing, congratulations. Thank you for making a difference. Thank you for the introduction, what you did. There we go. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Next, Lori Ross, Chris Smith, and our partnership. Lori, the floor is yours.
This person, these people, were nominated by Sarah Kimball, so I'd like to have Tarsha Harris, Raquel Galbadon, Lauren Coons, and Crystal Meyer come up. These two are part of a wonderful team that worked with Girls on the Run program at Thorpe Gordon Elementary, and they volunteered their time coming to weekly practices with girls that volunteered from the school. And they were nominated by Sarah, but Sarah was also a big part of this. And they worked with the girls, they had scheduled meets. At the end, there was one big meet, but it makes a difference in the empowerment of girls and believing in themselves. And so it is a really neat program. I got to watch it in action last year, and so I was really excited that it's expanded this year. So I'm going to say congratulations on being difference makers. Okay, good. You got the right one.
Okay, our last, our stewardship pillar, Jason Hoffman.
So the people that are being recognized, I think only Kim or Denise and Angie are all that came, right? So these people do a lot of work behind the scenes. Kim Drainer does payroll, Lisa Meili is our IT person for the business office and HR office, Linda Armstrong does most of our HR work, Angie Sturm is mostly the benefits part, and Denise Pierce is a big part of payroll. And so they do a lot of work behind the scenes. Kim Drainer does payroll, Lisa Meili is our IT person for the business office and HR office, Linda Armstrong does most of our HR work, Angie Sturm is mostly the benefits part, and Denise Pierce is a big part of payroll. And so they do a lot of work behind the scenes. I don't think people really appreciate what it takes for people to get paid every month. And so the September payroll is the big payroll that happens every year. And so we have about 1,400 employees, and about 950 of them get their first paycheck of the year on their new contract. So what that means is all the new hires have to be put in and everything done correctly, any raises that have been put in place, if people have advanced degrees, that needs to be taken care of, if they change positions, change buildings, there are just tons of moving parts on each one of the 1,400 people. So we pay about $4.8 million in salary every month, and there's another $1.3 million in benefits, so $6.1 million every month goes out to pay these 1,400 people. And so these people do a great job, and they were recognized. Dawn Bearhorst was doing her rounding, and they were recognized by someone while she was doing her rounding. So just really appreciate all they do, and it's awesome to get to recognize them for the great job they do.
Thank you. 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 Thank you, Lori. Moving on to recognitions. Yeah, but we have a specific gentleman to recognize this evening. Before we do that, just a quick note, I should have said this before we moved on from open forum, but you know, when you sit up here at the board table, I mean, we all know sometimes you have a hard enough time getting out the words that you want to say, how you want to say them, and you know, it can be a little daunting experience to stand up at a podium in front of a packed room and in front of an elected board. So just a couple of notes of thanks really to the students that came and organized some thoughts tonight and shared that with us. Like I said, that's not an easy thing to do, and we certainly have our respect and appreciation for you sharing your thoughts with us tonight.
Absolutely.
So moving on to retirement recognition.
Yes, Jason, I believe you're going to give a roll out here, if you would please.
Sure, so it's super sad for me to announce, or it's not announcing, but tonight is Bob Weber's final board meeting with us. So Bob's been with us for 25 years, so in your board packet, and if we had our break, we'll get the projector working again, but Bob gave us a listing of all the projects that have been done in his 25 years, which started in the first year that he was here, was the opening of the new middle schools that are now 25 years old. And so it is, it's an awesome history of all the amazing things that he's done for us as he's directed our facilities for 25 years. And so the Pioneer Trail and all the expansions at all the elementary schools, all the renovations of the elementary schools that have been done, the redo of Atkins Stadium, and now, Bob, did you tell me it was your first year that they put on the ballot to buy land for a second high school, or?
Ninety-five. I see Winston here. Do you remember?
So early in his career, they put on the ballot to buy land for a second high school. And so now that is happening as he's exiting from us, but it's, not only does he do a great job there, he's an awesome guy to be around, he's a historian that knows everybody in town and everything that's happened in town. So he's going to be really missed, so I'm excited that we can step out and give some congratulations to him in his last board meeting.
I mean, you're still going to come.
Online, probably.
Good answer.
If you're watching the live stream, if you can't make it.
Stream it, that's right.
What was his response?
We'll be on TV, right?
Wouldn't miss it, yeah.
Come on, Bob, stand up for a second, let us recognize you.
Speech? Not relevant. This is either Bob Ogle or Turner Lewis, one of them says, "Thanks for the memories." It wasn't Bob Ogle. But it's good to see Winston here. Winston interviewed me along with Dr. Straub and Turner Tyson on a Saturday, I think, in the superintendent's office, so it's good to see Winston. It's been fun, got a lot done. I'm really happy to see the new high school and renovations of the existing, because when I started 25 years ago, Jefferson City High School needed renovated then, and he said, "Okay, well, we're going to build a new one," or "We're going to pass a bond and renovate it," and we just now got around to doing it. Anyway, that's exciting. It's been fun, and I want to thank, of course, he's not here, but I believe it was Dr. Tatum said when she retired, she wanted to thank Straub for hiring her, Kimball for keeping her, Mitchell for keeping her, and Lynden, Lynden for keeping me. Anyway, thank you all.
My understanding is we have a few refreshments in the hallway?
We do, and we'd like to just invite folks to show appreciation for Bob, and we have some snacks and goodies here, so we'll take a short recess here and honor Bob and welcome everyone to the stage of this space. And we'll be back in 10 minutes. Yes, thank you all.
Congrats, Bob.
Is that Rich? What'd he say?
He said, "Congrats." He said, "Congrats, Bob."
I don't know, Bob.
Wake up, Rich.
I don't think Bob heard you, Rich.
Stand by, Rich.
Did a good job.
Reports in Communications.
Rich, are you with us?
Superintendent Rich, do we still have you?
Rich?
Richard.
We may have lost Rich.
No response.
Houston has a problem. Alright, so Superintendent update.
Absolutely. First off, I would like to just recognize here in our boardroom, the pictures there on the wall in front of you is some artwork from our students at Simonsen and behind you, some artwork from Thomas Jefferson. So it's always great to see our artwork of our students and as they showcase and what we do is about kids and so it's awesome to be able to see their work and we have some professional or future professional artists. It's always great to see that. Wanted to just touch on a couple of things on our three pillars. One underneath our learning, we will have as a January agenda item, our student drug testing as a topic, something that I would discuss last year and you guys asked us to evaluate and assess. Gary, actually, they were prepared even to do it here on this month's agenda. We have a lot of things, as I think you know, so it will be an agenda item at our January board meeting. So just FYI that you can anticipate that coming, so we're excited to see that and see what's working and what's not and what tweaks or changes possibly need to be made, so we're looking forward to that report. Underneath our partnership tool, Jason, could you bring up on our district website, as you know, the board approved our boundary lines for Jeff City High School and Capital City High School. We have the address lookup tool and so we're going to put in our address here, which is 315 East Dunkland, and we can show how this works. So would you just go back up to the main website? Right here's our main website, but right now, it's underneath here the address lookup tool, but once that's gone, go back.
Quick link.
Quick link even there. So either one, we can click on that and address lookup tool, so when you click on that, we'll type in an address. So basically of where you go to elementary school, where you go to middle school and where you go to high school. So we'll bring that up.
Are you on Internet or Chrome?
Yes.
It loads faster in Chrome.
Chrome. Anyway.
It works well.
It does work well. And we did last Friday, we had a little trial at our Coffee with Larry at the Miller Center. And so, upper left-hand corner, type in an address. So here's the map and as you can see, it's there within the yellow that is the Thorpe Gordon Elementary School, because it's clicked on the elementary school button. We can go to the middle school button, right here, and you can see this is here in the pink, which is the Lewis and Clark Middle School. And if you click on the high school, it's in the red for JC as the Capital City High School's there. So you do need to zoom in a little bit if it nears a borderline, but it's a tool that our Realtors had asked for, that they'd had some questions regarding our boundary lines that you guys approved as a Board of Education. So just kind of want to show that as we work partnership, being transparent, so folks can see exactly where our boundary lines are. So any questions on our boundary lines or this tool?
Larry, my understanding is, is the work still ongoing for the mobile version? Like if folks use their phone or the tablets?
It's thumbs up. There was a tweet that, but I believe right now, you could get your phone and the mobile tool's working as well, so.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah. And a thumbs up to Ryan and the Communications Department, did a great job with that and thanks for work to do there, Ryan. So wanted to just touch off, touch on a couple of other things. We had a Coffee with Larry, I touched on, we have Central Office Chili Cook-Off on the 30th of November, that was fun here in Central Office, as we are strong together and we had some hot samples and we had some mild samples, but it was a warm chemistry between us all, I'll try to tie that in somehow. I'll just keep going. Went out to Skalaski and thanks to Lori and a part of a judging team of the Christmas decorations out there, so we appreciate their partnership and what they do for our school district, not only for our school district, but for our community and the Skalaski and everything they do, so it was a need to be a part of that. And the Audit Committee, we had a meeting on the 28th and they're going to share this here later, so I won't get into details there, but that's what I have at this time. Any questions on any of these things?
Same, done.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And we have Chief of Learning update, Dr. Shindor.
Okay, I will add to the boundary line lookup tool. Ryan's office rolled that communication piece out for us on Thursday, last Thursday. I anticipated a flood of phone calls on Friday and they didn't come. So to date, we've had 12 phone calls inquiring about something about the boundary lines and it's resulted in two. We've had two students ask for special permission, so not quite the flood yet that we anticipated, but we also put a deadline for February 1st, but so far 12 phone calls. Want to remind you that tomorrow evening at 4:00 is the ELA Resource Fair, it's going to be at Dix Road, starting at 4:00, and so we wrapped up our ELA Pilot K-12, teachers have been piling the resources, so tomorrow at 4:00, we'll have all of those resources by grade level set out and the pilot teachers will be there to answer questions. We've invited every teacher in the district, we hope to have a few hundred teachers there to ask questions of the pilot teachers, to look at the resources that were piloted and to give us some input about those resources and we'll collect that information tomorrow. So along the process then, later in the week, we'll bring that team back together, we'll look at the input from the teachers about the resources, we'll have conversations with the pilot team about how it went and hopefully be able to put together a recommendation to bring to the board for consideration possibly in January. So tomorrow at 4:00. Would also like to make some comments about block schedule. So you heard from a few of our students tonight and all of the comments that they made are right on track, very valid concerns and comments that they made and we appreciate the fact that they're willing to come and share those. I want to take you back, though, that the conversations about block schedule really started about a year and a half ago when Gary Verslois first came here. The conversations were had about why it is that we use the current structure that we have and those conversations went on for a while and then the school year got started and the conversations kind of faded. Well, when it's time to start having conversations about Capital City and opening that up and getting the programs up and running and the curriculum, the conversation started up again about the use of our current schedule, 612. And so one of the things that we asked was for our building leaders to begin having conversations with staff about conversation around, are we satisfied with the current structure that we have, what about going back to a traditional schedule? And so there are a lot of conversations happening at the building level with principals and that information was being relayed back to Gary and surprisingly, not too long ago, there was a meeting upstairs and Gary had his secondary principals and there seemed to be, at least from the 912 program, an overwhelming interest in having conversations about more of a seven-block schedule. You all were aware of that and one of the things that you asked was that more conversations take place and let's get a sense as to how the staff feels about moving in that direction. And so I want to share with you some of the comments and issues that came up during those conversations with administration and teachers. First one was about the pacing that is currently too fast. So you know that under our current structure, all of our curriculum, a course is condensed into a semester as opposed to a year. And so one of the concerns by some teachers and by administration is that questioning whether or not we are taking a large amount of content and condensing that into a very short time period. So we have extended class time during the day, but we do that within a short duration, so within a semester. So the conversations are about the fact that we are pressing a lot of content into a very short timeframe. When they looked at the difference, if you were to switch to a seven-block or a traditional schedule, if you will, and you take the amount of time, class time, and the amount of time throughout a semester or a year, I actually found that to go to a seven-block, that there's an addition of about six weeks, it's equivalent to about six weeks instruction if you go to a seven-block as compared to the current four-block schedule that we use. Other conversations were about trying to avoid the gaps of instruction in the sequential courses like ELA 1 and 2, Spanish 1 and 2, because under the current structure, you may take one of those courses, say as a sophomore in your initial semester and then you don't have that course again until a year later, so you miss a semester of not having that course. And so sometimes, some cases, literally a year gap between the courses that you take and so that can be eliminated through the seven course. Also had a lot of conversations about the concerns about what absences do to a lengthened schedule. So because you're condensing so much content into 80 minutes, when you miss just one or two of those, you have a considerable amount of work to make up if you're sick. If you're sick more than two, three days, it's pretty hard to overcome. That is at least alleviated a little bit when you go to a seven-block because the amount of content that's put out within a day is lessened. Also had conversations about the flexibility in meeting the students' course requirements, conversations around the engagement and learning stamina. It is no surprise to any of us that spend time at the secondary level that we have an issue with students staying engaged for long blocks of time. You don't have to be there very long to see that it's very difficult to keep them engaged for an 80-minute period. A seven-period schedule would eliminate the 27-week AP course design and align better to the College Board, the new testing protocol, and the difficult-to-schedule transfer students, about 90% of which come from a traditional schedule, and so it's difficult to take a student from a traditional schedule and then convert them into. And I know tonight, you heard from one of our students talk about the difficulty of maybe switching the other way from going to our current schedule into a seven-period and what that looks like. I want you to hear that we have no interest whatsoever in harming the track that our students are on. We're aware of the issues that arise when you switch from one to the other and our goal is that we come up with a plan that we can accommodate the students. What we don't want to do is feel as though we are restricted or confined to forevermore staying with this model because in reality, if we do, we will always have that issue. We believe that if we take the time and we plan well, we can accommodate the students who are in situations like you heard tonight, who are prepared for their junior or senior year and now concerned that they wouldn't be able to take that coursework. Again, I'll go back to that you had asked that we communicate with staff. I can tell you that lots of conversations took place with building leadership and teachers and Gary Verslois participated in staff meetings at the middle and high school and had conversations with teachers. I can't tell you tonight that we have 100% of staff who are, who want to switch. I don't know that that will ever happen. In today's world, it's very difficult to get 100% of people to agree on anything. So I can't give you that tonight. What I can tell you, though, based on the feedback from all of the secondary principals and feedback from teachers to Gary Verslois and the staff meetings that he attended, that it is fair to say that the majority of your staff are interested in moving to a traditional block schedule. So two things we know are that the current model is absolutely hampering student success. We believe that based on the things that, the conversations that took place and we have a majority of our staff that are interested in us having conversations around switching to a traditional block schedule. So questions about that?
I have a question. Is there, I mean, everything I've seen, and you know, I have a middle schooler and I think it absolutely makes sense to go to a seven-block because of the maturity level and their ability to sit in that seat for that amount of time. But is there ever an opportunity to maybe do a seven-block with middle and do the four-block with the high school where they're, we really are preparing them for the next level?
Let me take that one?
Go ahead.
So if I may first start, Lindsay, from the broader picture is, we like research-based stuff, especially in this profession, and there's a lot of research out there on traditional and block schedules and you won't find any research that will say, one is guarantee you to have better academic achievement than the other. They will simply state the pros and cons.
Okay.
So why are we here discussing potential change? When I hear from building leaders that they're hearing that we don't have enough time to teach what we need to teach and teach it well, and we can gain six weeks of instructional time, that alone deserves our utmost consideration.
Would you explain that?
Yeah, we heard.
Explain how you get extra six weeks.
Well, you just, right now, if the block is 84 minutes long times semester, you take those minutes times 87 days, or you take 50, 52 minutes times 174 days, you gain about six weeks of instruction. Is it 50, is it 52 minutes? So it could approximately six weeks of instruction. So I get that and like Brian said, you won't ever have 100% agree. You might not have, if I had a room full of 50 administrators in here, you might not have 100% agree, our teachers, our students, our parents. But when about 80 or 85% of our kids will benefit from that six weeks extra of instruction, we've got to pay attention to that. Now, that doesn't mean we forget the 15 to 20%, and you know, Will and David and Joe, they did a great job, you know? They are on an accelerated track. So if we do this, we would develop a transition plan. You know, do we double-block to allow them the same courses? I think Joe's a junior. Is there a way that we can double-block to where he can still take three of something or four of something, take both calc classes, to where we would double-block and those kids on an accelerated program take what they want to take? Now, I can't sit here and say that we're going to satisfy 100% of student requests, course requests. That's what drives a master schedule, but no schedule does. You know, I think somebody said earlier that I couldn't take this course this year. You know, I would say those of you who've had kids come through the system under current schedule, I bet you ran into a schedule conflict somewhere along the way. The seven-period's not perfect, the four-block's not perfect, but when I hear that we need more time to teach and we can gain six weeks of instruction and we can transition, have a plan for the kids in the accelerated programs, they've been working on a four-year plan since eighth grade. And you know what? If that's the 15 or 20, we can't forget those kids either. And so there would be a transition plan in place, so it's, you know, it's, when this came out, we were talking about our programming, I'm like, you guys know what time it is. And here's where we ended up is, the leadership absolutely feels this is the right thing to do. And although it's, my counselors are wondering, when is the decision's going to be made? They would like to get going on what they need to do. Although the timing is not perfect, I think the right decision trumps the timing. And through the high school getting feedback from their teachers and Simonsen, I did have a chance to visit with both middle schools, you know, is it all tied together, middle and high? Just none of them's perfect and it just, again, no matter what schedule you have, try to satisfy 100% of student requests and you won't, but when I hear 80, 85% of our students will benefit from six more weeks of instruction. And there would be a plan, like, you know, if you were three years under a block and one year under a seven-period, what would be the graduation requirements and all that? So there's been a lot of conversation, although a little bit quick. I'm using all your time for your report.
Does anybody else have a question?
I do have a question. Can you tell me what was the process used to gather feedback from the teachers? Because when you tell me, a majority of them think, well, I know how this works. Whoever's barking the loudest gets hurt. And so I just wonder if everybody was allowed an opportunity and how they were allowed an opportunity to participate in this discussion?
And it probably, you know, took on a complexion of a little different vetting process because of when the conversations really picked up, each secondary building went back and in their own way, whether it was by the block that they had a planned period, was it by department, was it by building leadership team, was it by a survey, was it by each building leader did their own way of getting feedback from their teachers? And at the, especially at the 9 through 12 level, you know, often on through the years, there's been conversations and anecdotal, you know, documentation or notes of, you know, good, bad, indifferent. So each building leader led that charge to get feedback and when I hear the building leadership telling, you know, agreeing that, you know, we can get a lot of positives for this and if we come up with a way to transition it well, that says a lot.
Thank you.
Do you have another question?
I do have another question. What does this do to the electives that we've set up? I've heard that then we significantly have to scale back the amount of elective classes that are offered. Is that?
That is, that's every year.
Okay.
You put these courses out there for course request time and you don't know what electives are going to have enough kids sign up that they are taught the next year or not, so that process really doesn't change.
Okay. And then just to, more about coursework, what about some of those programs that like Mr. Mildred are currently doing where they're pairing those classes like social studies and English together and kind of tag teaming with another teacher? Is that something that's going to go away when we transition in, out of Simonsen and into the high school or is that maybe something that we can?
It questions exactly like that, Lindsay, as why we started having meetings a couple of months ago about where are we going with everything, integrated courses? So right now, we plan to continue, we have two integrated courses, one at the freshman and one at the sophomore level. At the freshman level, it's POC, Perspectives of Citizenship, and at the sophomore level, we have Bio Lit. So we continue, right now, the plan is to offer both options. You can take it as an integrated or you can take them each as a standalone. So at the freshman level, if you didn't take, or let me use Bio Lit as an example, your sophomore year, you didn't take Bio Lit, you'd take Biology and English 2. Same amount of time in your schedule, same number of credits. So we're looking at giving kids options to do either.
Gotcha. So they could still do the integrated classes?
Correct.
Okay.
Long answer for, yes.
No, that's great. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
What about Nichols?
The seven-period, they will have zero impact on Nichols. I talked to Sharon.
Okay. So auto mechanics or whatever, they'll need that extra time?
They have a chunk of time in the morning, a chunk of time in the afternoon.
Other question?
I think, oh, my only question is, you've kind of answered, but I think, you know, if there's, if we have a commitment and we assure the students and parents that we do have a transition plan to make sure that we accommodate those, again, potential negative impacts of somebody that's been on a track, like you said, since the eighth grade where they've laid their schedule out and now we make this change, I think that, to me, is significant that we acknowledge that we have to accommodate and we have to make sure that we plan so that those students won't be negatively impacted by this, just kind of a change.
You know, I can't sit here and say with 100%, but no schedule can do that.
Right.
Gary, a couple of questions. So do we know, because I don't remember unless it's been published and I just missed it, how long have we had the four-block schedule in place?
From what I can tell, it was around 2000, that's when we started it.
Well, there was.
About 70.
Until 2000, it was the traditional and then they went to the four-block, is that correct? And then there was a 10-block for a?
I don't remember that.
Okay.
Very brief.
Very brief.
Very, very.
And I think a big part of this as well, so I talked to the.
Oh, that's fine.
Can I tie to that?
Yes.
The, I talked to Dr. Fisher and Sean Kelch today, two J and L C's principals, and asked at the middle school level, and they set their staffs on board in both buildings, looking at it, our middle school level of the opportunity for growth and improvement in those buildings, from student behaviors to student learning, and I think that's just an opportunity. When Gary originally was like, the high school, the 9 through 12 are 80 to 85%, and Bob James and Ben Melton both confirmed that with me with conversations of the, that this is what they were wanting to do to raise the bars, we keep talking about, move the needle forward, student behaviors especially, as we know that's an area. The reading aspect, as far as doing that every day, how we can improve literacy, and we know that's the foundation of it all. So I'm excited about that and I appreciate just their work and what they've done with that.
So the conversations have been taking place at the secondary level off and on for years. And so the middle school's kind of run into the last minute and I had a chance to meet with the middle school staff at the 9 through 12 level, the building administrators met with their staff and got the feedback for me. And really, the middle school staff, the exact percentage, majority easily, and it's more about, you know, we're not opposed, they're anxious, okay, well, can we tweak it to meet the needs of our building? Absolutely.
So when we're talking about things like this, whether it's the school district or any other endeavor, and Larry spent a lot of time mentioning these kinds of things for good reason, when we're trying to raise the bar and we're trying to improve the quality of the academics for the district, and you look at your peer group and you look at who's getting it done and who's at the top level, and you may have already answered this, so do we know what the top performing, say the top 10% of districts in the state are doing in terms of whether it's a seven or a four? Or do you have a mixture? Do you see a mixture of both? Do you guys know?
I didn't do that, Steve, but I would say there's certainly a mixture because, now, I will say this, and again, I don't have the research in front of me and numbers, but I can tell you that some schools who have gone to a block schedule, there's been more of those go back to a traditional than there are schools that are starting the block new.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you all.
So I appreciate the conversation and the reason that we're bringing it to you is because what we know is that in order for those to happen, we have to build schedules and so waiting until the end of the school year to build schedules isn't an option for us and so. And so we felt a sense of urgency to talk about it tonight. What we'd like to do is move forward with at least having conversations with the staff about the questions they have. What is it really going to look like? And begin looking at building those schedules and what would that look like? And so that would be our next step.
Thank you, Dan Schindor. Moving on to Chief Financial Officer, Chief Operating Officer update.
So I'm going to be brief. We have our auditor here and he's going to talk a lot about what's been happening in the business office. But one exciting thing that happened recently, if you look through the list of projects that happened under Bob Weber's watch, there's a lot of stuff that's happened to secure our buildings and make sure we're safe. And with the construction at the high school, we're going to enclose and not have students walking back and forth between Nichols and the high school, which is one of our biggest areas of safety risk, and then the transfer of students at Simonson. We get rid of both of those issues. So we've done a really good job of securing our buildings, but we're never 100% safe from an incident. And so one thing we didn't have was a crisis management and post-crisis recovery plan. And so Frank Underwood has done a great job and came up with our crisis management post-crisis recovery plan. And on November 27th, he presented this to all the central office administrators and other key personnel, like the head of nursing and other people. And we did some tabletop exercises. And one of the things it does is it creates an incident commander and the roles and responsibilities of the person that takes on that role. And then there are five sub-commanders and the roles and responsibilities of each of those people. And so just doing a tabletop exercise was certainly eye-opening to go through that scenario and think, oh, my gosh, what would I do? And so to have those roles and responsibilities defined, I think is going to be great. And so we've all been instructed to keep one of these in our car, one of these at our desk. And I think he did a great job. I don't know if you have any thoughts on it, but it was, it was really great.
Great job to Frank. And it was just looking at scenarios in the reality and the old, you know, plan for the worst but hope for the best, that planning part. And I thought it was great. Really was.
So unless you have any questions for me, I'll give most of my time to Rick here in a little bit.
I think so.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Moving on to future dates, let's see those listed there. Tomorrow night, the 81st Capitol Caroling. So if you're available to attend, that's always a great event. Look forward to that. Christmas break coming up. And the other item I called to your attention is with the board retreat scheduled for January. Larry and I and his, Larry's going to be working with his administrative team to develop the agenda for that. So if you all have any specific thoughts, certainly feel free to reach out to him and me. Be happy to take those under advisement for that night. Moving on to old business, next we have the 2017-2018 audit report. Make sure.
Jason, would you introduce right here?
Yeah. Sorry. So Rick Barata, he's the partner with Kerberic and Breckle. This is our second year using Kerberic and Breckle. And so he came and presented to our audit and finance committee, which is Lorelei, Lori, and Scott. And so we did that a couple of weeks ago and went through the preliminary discussion of the audit. And so we now have the audit that you, that's been pushed out to you and he's going to go through a presentation and I'm sure he'll be happy to answer any questions also.
Thank you. Does everybody have a copy of our presentation materials? Okay.
Yes.
Well, thanks for having me here to present the results of our audit of Jefferson City School District for the year ended June 30th, 2018. For those following along, on page two, just as a reminder, it is management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements in accordance with modified cash basis of accounting. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on the fair presentation of those financial statements. We did perform our audit in accordance with three different sets of standards, including generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and uniform guidance. And as a result of our audit, we issued what's called an unmodified opinion. It's also known as a clean opinion and it's the best of three possible opinions that we can render as auditors. It means that based on our test work, we did in fact find the financial statements to be fairly presented. Going on to page three, we just have a high-level overview of the financial statements. If you look at the operating funds, which include both the general fund and the special revenue fund, the operating fund balance is approximately 26% of the operating fund expenditures compared to 23% in the prior year. The district's target is about 20%. The debt service fund increased due to the increase in tax rates to fund the new general obligation bond issuances that were approved by the voters. The fund balance is sufficient to cover about 53% of the 2019 debt service requirements. And then the capital projects fund increased significantly and that's due to the issuance of the general obligation bonds, again, passed by the voters in April 2017. So going on to page four, as part of our audit, we are required to evaluate internal controls over financial reporting. If we were to identify any material weaknesses in internal control, we'd be required to bring those to your attention. We did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We're also required to test the district's compliance with grants and regulations that could have a material impact on the financial statements and we found no non-compliance. So in addition to our audit of the financial statements, we're also required by the uniform guidance to audit the district's compliance with requirements that are applicable to its major federal programs. This year, we tested three different programs as major federal programs, which included the special education cluster, the career and technical education program, and the child nutrition cluster. As a result of our audit, we issued again, an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean opinion. We did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control over compliance. We did have to note two internal control matters that do require attention. The first is related to the child nutrition cluster. In our testing, we noted that some of the household applications for free and reduced price meals were not always signed by the district's determining official evidencing their review and certification. Also regarding the special education cluster, we noted that the early childhood expenditures, which were reimbursed with federal funds, were not always tracked separately from those funded with state and local sources. That also contributed to a non-compliance item. So our recommendations regarding those matters, along with management's corrective action plan, are detailed in our report. It's important to note that neither of those matters affected our opinion on the district's compliance. We did, as I mentioned, issue an unmodified opinion. So the third and final piece of our audit, the state requires that we issue an opinion on the district's compliance with specified requirements of Missouri laws and regulations, more specifically budgetary and disbursement procedures, attendance records, and transportation records. We did perform this examination in accordance with the Atestation Standards established by the AAICPA. And in doing so, again, we issued an unmodified opinion, again, also a clean opinion, meaning that we found no material non-compliance. We did have one other matter. The district is required to submit their summary of their prior year, I'm sorry, publish a summary of their prior year audit report within 30 days of the receipt of the audit. Summary was actually published within 21 days late. That was due to a misunderstanding between our firm and district management as far as who's responsible for that. But going forward, we will make sure that that gets published within 30 days. And then lastly, in addition to our three-page audit opinion that accompanies the district's financial statements, we're required to give the Board of Education some additional information about the results of our audit. All of those additional communications that we're required to make are outlined over the next two pages. First, all the significant accounting policies that the district uses in preparing the financial statements are outlined in Note 1. There were no complex or controversial transactions that lacked authoritative guidance or consensus. There were no changes in accounting policies. When you're comparing the current year audited financial statements to the prior year, you know that you're comparing apples to apples. The modified cash basis of accounting is used by the district, so therefore there are no particularly sensitive accounting estimates included in the financial statements. In addition to auditing, the statements were also required to audit the adequacy of the note disclosures that accompany the statements. We found those disclosures to be neutral, consistent, and clear. No disagreements with management regarding any auditing, accounting, or reporting matters. And we obtained a representation letter from management where they certified to us that they believe the financial statements are fairly presented and they provided us all the information that might be relevant to our audit. And as far as we know, management didn't consult with any other independent accountants to get a second opinion in any matters. And then lastly, on page eight, if we were to identify any or propose any material adjustments to the financial statements, we'd be required to bring those to your attention and we did not, based on our test work. Just in conclusion, I would like to thank Jason and Denise and the rest of their team that did a fantastic job in preparing for us. We found the records to be very well organized and they were very cooperative, full cooperation. So I'd be glad to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Grotz.
Lorelei is the committee chair. Anything that you?
No. If we had any questions, we asked them in the audit committee and we were satisfied with the answers. So we appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Grotz, thanks. Appreciate you and your firm's work on the audit for the last couple of years. I understand it's been very thorough, so that's what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Hoffman, I understand, did you mention once before, Ms. Pierce played a good role in making sure that everything got to where it needed to go?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that is, when the auditors come in, it's always a little bit nervous time because you really think you're doing everything you should be doing. And that's just confirmation that we're doing that. But everything that he just talked about is compliments to Denise and the great work that she does. So she deserves a lot of recognition over this excellent report.
Good job, Denise.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you, Denise.
The comments on the audit. And the action to accept that? You look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Lorelei.
Second.
Thank you, Ken. Discussion. On favor of approving the 1718 audit as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Very good. Audit's approved. Thank you. Moving on to school calendars. Mr. Hoffman. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I jumped, Ken. My apologies. Boundary lines update. Paul Seaton, you're the chair.
So I simply want to give as a, as a report, the fact that the boundary line policy committee or the policy committee will not meet until December the 19th. And we will entertain at that time a proposed boundary line policy. As part of our action, when we approved the changes to the boundary line, it was noted that the board would act on a new policy in the December meeting. However, it didn't take into consideration the fact that the committee was not going to meet before our December meeting. And so I just wanted to inform you all that we have a proposed policy that will be entertaining in the committee on our meeting the 19th with plans to bring it before the board for your approval in the January meeting.
Thanks, Ken. Appreciate your work on that. Any questions? Okay. Now, moving on to calendar. 192020 calendar. Jason?
So when I first presented the idea of this one-year condensed calendar, I informed you that the biggest issue with the calendar was going to be not having the staff compensation day in the fall. And while we didn't receive a lot of input about that day, the input that we did receive was resounding that that was an issue. So we put out a vote to the staff to say, all right, we don't really have a lot of options, but one option that, so we've said, all right, option A is the proposed calendar that has both the staff compensation days on the second and the third. So we gave them an option B and said, we could move the January 3rd day to a day in October around parent-teacher conferences. And then we would take October 3rd and use that as professional development day. And so that would keep the same number of contract days for staff, but would actually go to one fewer student instruction day. And we put that out to a vote. And drumroll, please. It was a lot of votes. You can tell it was a very, people were very interested in the topic. So the current proposed calendar came out with more votes at 445 to 382. We've gotten some good feedback. You heard Mr. Gainey say how appreciative it was that, you know, we listened and they were able to vote. So the group that is most passionate about option B are our elementary teachers and we know that. And so one of the things we would like to do going forward to continue to take input, we currently have both parent-teacher conference days in the same week. And so it is a very long week. So we would like to continue to collect feedback and just go to the elementary teachers and say, all right, would you rather continue to have them both in the same week or would you like to separate them one one week and one the next? And during our rounding, I've asked some of the teachers that and I've gotten mixed results. Some say, no, just have them both in the same week and get it over with. And others have said, yeah, that makes some sense. So very unscientific there in my rounding, but we will go ahead and collect feedback and see if we can make that a little easier because we do know that that is an issue, especially for our elementary teachers. So this is the third board meeting that we've actually had the calendar. We, I think at this time, are ready to move forward with approving the proposed calendar.
And that is with option A.
Option A, the calendar that we've had in front of you since September.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Lorelei.
Second.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you for collecting that.
Questions for Jason on the calendar?
So do you think you'll put it to a vote with the elementary teachers, kind of like you did here?
Yeah, I think that's what we're thinking.
One week and another week?
Yeah.
And now we'll unpack the calendar either way.
No, it'll just, the placement of where those parent-teacher conferences, because those, that's work after the school day. So that's what makes it so long, is they teach all day and then have parent-teacher conferences in the evenings.
Correct. And that's how they earn the compensation day because they've already worked those hours in the evening, so.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. All right. So we have a motion in the second on the floor to accept the 2019-2020 calendar, which includes option A. All in favor of approving that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Very good. Calendar's approved. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate everybody's work on that. Moving on to new business. It's the Jason Hoffman Show tonight on our new business.
Yeah.
And we've got overview of school start times. Dr. Lindstrom, Dr. Schindor.
Yeah, I'll just touch on the setting the state. I'll tee it up and I'll let them hit it. That'd be better of Jason hitting it anyway instead of me.
Just if I can, I'm sorry, let me interject for a second. Just to clarify for everybody, we've got more folks in attendance and maybe watching tonight, this is just an overview, right? We're not calling for action.
Absolutely. We're not asking for your vote tonight. We want to share with you, they have a calendar of gathering our staff input, we have days scheduled, community town halls, and just an overview moving forward of what that looks like as we consider options that involve all three of our pillars, learning. What does the research say on that? The partnership involving folks in the process and the stewardship piece, if we can save up to half a million dollars a year with changing start times, that's been a good steward of patrons' money. So those three things lead us into, so Brian, Jason, I'll let you guys kind of touch on it from there. I guess on arm wrestle or?
I did most of the time last month, so.
I think.
I just want to take a few minutes and just share another perspective. So I know that there have been conversations and this whole thing started, this issue started because Capital City and having to change transportation routes and then looking at how can we save money? And so there've been a lot of conversations about how much money will this save us? And that's an important piece. But I know that over the next couple of months, there's going to be a lot of conversations take place at staff meetings and at town halls. And there'll be a lot of conversations about money and people's preferences over whether they like it, they don't like it. And there'll be a lot of comments made that are more about the adults. And I just wanted us to think a little bit about the kids and the instruction aside. And so there is a lot of research and EC, was that his name?
Yes.
I think EC's hacked my computer. He did a great job. He did a great job. We should have just slowed down, but he did a great job. But he hit on a lot of the research points that I had done.
And he beat the timer, too.
He did good. And, but he had referenced the Academy of Pediatrics and the Academy of Sleep Medicine and a few of those, and those are the research studies that I've been looking at as well. There is a significant amount of research around changing start times for the purpose of academics and supporting kids, and he talked a lot about the health of kids and sleep and that kind of stuff, but there's a lot around the academics in those. But the studies, anytime you look at the studies around changing times, it is always connected to sleep, because sleep seems to be the issue for teenagers. And so what the studies talk about are that when kiddos begin to go through puberty, something happens to them. And I know you're thinking, of course it does. But what they've learned is that melatonin, which is the hormone that really tells you it's time to sleep, tells you it's time to wake up, well, the gland that's in your body, it's called the pineal, which was actually called that because it looks like a pine cone, but it's not pineal, it's pineal, it releases melatonin. And melatonin is the hormone that tells your body it's time to go to sleep. What the research says is that when kids go through puberty, what happens to that gland is, does two things. One is shrinks, and two, it changes its timing in when it releases the melatonin and tells kids to go to sleep. So you probably have noticed if you had teenagers, that as kids are in pre-adolescence, they don't have such a hard time falling asleep when they're little. They can fall asleep at eight or nine o'clock, but as they go into the teenage years, they want to stay up later and later. You've noticed this. Well, it's because there's actually something happening inside their body. Well, what happens then is the melatonin is released into their body at a later time, so they're not ready to go to sleep early. They stay up later, and then the melatonin, when it's time to wake up, when the sun's coming up, it takes a longer time to dissolve within their body, so they want to sleep longer, and that's what's happening to them. And so it's all around the sleep study, and what they've learned is that you can either ignore that, or you can accept the fact that it's a reality. And what they say is that the time of eight o'clock seems to be a critical time for middle school through college-age kids. A lot of the studies look at the academic ability of kids who are asked to engage in instruction at eight o'clock or prior, and kids who are from 8:30 on. And so what they've learned is that kids who are allowed that extra time and don't actually get engaged academically until 8:30 show a higher level of engagement, there's less falling asleep in class, they actually talk about the fact that there's less tardies, there's less absenteeism, they talk about the fact that academics go up, that grades go up, and even EC talked about there's a three percentile gain in kids who have that extra time. Now, there are critics who would say, that just means you're going to let high schoolers go to bed later and wake up later, and it doesn't matter. But the research goes on to show that that's not the case. What actually happens is they actually gain an hour of sleep. The time that they fall asleep for schools that started later, you would think that the kids would just go to bed an hour later. Well, the study found that that wasn't true. They actually continued to go to bed at the same time, but they got up later, which means they got anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour longer of sleep, and that in itself made a difference. And I won't read a lot of the research to you tonight, but there is a piece that I found extremely interesting, and it is about the, how the minutes of sleep affect, and here's what it says. This is the University of Minnesota. They surveyed more than 7,000 high schoolers in Minnesota about their sleep habits and grades, and here's what they found out. Teens who received As averaged about 15 minutes more sleep than B students, who in turn averaged 11 more minutes than C students, and the C students had 10 more minutes than the D students, and that equals out to about 36 minutes. And so a lot of the research is clear that when it comes to middle schoolers, all the way up to college-age kids, if you have the ability to move your schedule out past 8:30, there are incredible benefits to doing that. And so I just, as we move through the next couple of months and have conversations with the community, I think it's a piece that we need to take a serious look at and take into consideration as we're making decisions for kids.
Question?
So last month, I went through the money part. I don't really think I need to go through that again, but I think Lorelei and Scott brought up good points about students that need to go work and some other things that we hadn't really considered before. And so we've talked a lot about it, obviously, in the last month, and one of the things that came to our attention, and you heard a little bit about it from Gary, talking about how in a high school schedule, you can double-block and you have some wiggle room and creative things you can do with a high school schedule that you can't do with an elementary schedule. So if we had the high school schedule going later, and I know it's going against the research, and we don't, we're not really going to push this, but we could offer zero-hour classes. And so obviously, they would have to have their own transportation to get there, because our buses can't run and get them there at a zero hour and then have them there also at the regular start time. But for students that really needed to, and we still have a lot of research to do and make sure we can make it all work and how we staff it, there's a lot of things. But students, if they need to leave and go to work early, they could come and do a zero-hour class and then leave an hour early, so they would still be able to get out at the same time. We couldn't have all of our athletes doing that. I don't know that we'd be able to schedule it, but it does offer us some flexibility and other options as far as having secondary go second that we don't have if we flip-flop that. Do you want me to go ahead and talk about collecting feedback, or were you...
Yeah, why don't you?
So our plan is Stephanie's working on getting us scheduled in every one of the buildings. We're going to go talk to every staff at a staff meeting, and we have town hall meetings scheduled. The first one is January 29th at 6:00 at Lewis and Clark, and the second one is January 31st at 5:00 at TJ. We thought it might be better to stagger the times a little bit, somebody maybe likes to come right after work or needs a little different time. And so with February's board meeting being later in February, our plan is to go ahead and continue to come with a recommendation at February. It's just two weeks later is our March meeting, but then come back again at March for final approval. We heard that you were afraid that coming back was rushing it with the holidays, so we've pushed that back to March, and it's really just two weeks from our February meeting. So hopefully it'll allow us to gather that feedback.
And those days, just for clarification, are not just for those parents. It's a community-wide town hall just hosted in our two middle schools in different times for folks to be, give other options that may work, different work times. That's open up to the entire community, so.
I really want to make sure we're getting feedback from our extracurricular coaches, because they are going to have to adjust their practice times. I mean, cross-country's not going to be able to run after school in the dark, so they're going to have to adjust. I just want to make sure that we're getting, to be heard from those people.
And that was my question, I wondered, have we solicited input from the activities, I mean, from athletic directors and the activity directors?
We've, I know I've had conversations with the activities directors, but no, I haven't had direct conversations with coaches, but we will certainly make sure we do that.
And we know Columbia, there are three high schools, they all start at 9:00. So all of their sports in Columbia, from Hickman to Rockbridge to Battle, have had to adjust, and as we look at our conference moving forward with those three schools, our two schools, Helius and Sedalia, of what that will look like to mesh scheduling-wise, and we do realize that there's only so much sun, and if it's during times without lights, adjusting and planning accordingly. So we're just, we're not asking for your, just an FYI, information, schedule, we're going to meet in every building with all the staff, there's two town halls, also coffees with Larry each month, we're going to do a brown bag lunch with Larry, just invite folks to bring their lunch. We did that before with some topics, invite folks to come in here and just hear their voice, have it as an agenda item, so folks could come and address here the board and just kind of give an update on the feedback on where we are.
Talked about it, the last two faculty council meetings also.
Absolutely. So we'll have scheduled 33 different kinds of community input through faculty council, ACDC, just all the different times, and we'll have those all documented for you.
Can we make sure those are on the board calendar as well, please, those dates and times?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions?
I think I'm up next.
I was going to say, don't sit. You're up.
City development agreement?
Yeah.
So I apologize for the delay in getting this out, but we just got it back from the attorney's office today, and then we had a couple of modifications even through the day that we didn't like, very minor modifications, but this is something that's actually been in discussion since 2013, when we bought the land at 179. And so there was a development agreement then, but now that we're finally building the street through the property, this is the final development agreement. The city and the county are going to pay $1.5 million for the completion of the street through the property on 179. Some of the things that have been up for discussion, bringing into this development agreement is bringing Union Street and Lewis and Clark Drive, and so what we've found is that we're probably not going to spend $1.5 million, so this agreement allows anything that's less than $1.5 million, we can use to upgrade those two streets as we're taking over ownership of those two streets going forward. And it also brings into an agreement that we will only pay 50% of the building permit fees on these two projects. So this has been in discussion for quite some time, that the street is pretty much done, so it's just finalizing the agreement between the two government entities. It's been looked at, Duane Tryman's looked at it, he's worked back and forth with the city's attorney.
I noticed there's a section here that talks about if we don't respond and if we choose not to do anything. And what's their solution then, to block off the street and close it, or...
Well, I mean, we've paid for it so far, so I guess we would block it off and close it and not let people use it. No, I don't think we would.
And you're right, we probably won't do that, so I understand.
So you mentioned taking over Union and Lewis and Clark, and I think in past meetings we talked about if that happens, are we responsible then for the snow removal, or where's that fall?
Yep, we would be responsible for the snow removal.
And how much is that going to cost us to be able to do that?
Bob's gone.
Oh, Bob's gone.
Bob's out here. Got his cookies and...
I don't, I mean, we have our staff, I mean, our staff does it, so I mean, it would be time, and I mean, we have the equipment to do it.
We do have the, we're good.
Union Street, I mean, Union, it really does make a lot of sense for us to take over Union. We, it's hard to really call that a city street.
Sure.
Lewis and Clark Drive, a little different, it's, but...
But the equipment we have is adequate to cover those kinds of...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
It's just time.
Yep.
That's going to take more than...
All right. We're clearing the parking lots at Lewis and Clark.
So is there issues with Union Street still with the water line and stuff?
There are some, there are some issues, and we had the civil engineers at CMPS look at it, and we have an estimate of what it will take to bring it up to speed, and we feel like that with the money that we're going to save under the $1.5 million, that we can bring that street up to good repair. So within the agreement, there are four projects, I believe, that we're allowed to spend that money on. It's Union Street, Lewis and Clark Drive, crosswalk at South, and a crosswalk at Thorpe Gordon. So it's probably going to be $200, $250,000 that will be under that 1.5, so a good amount of money to help us with those projects. That probably wouldn't have gotten done without this.
Sure.
And are we confident, or are we comfortable that we don't have any inherent risk with utilities or those kinds of things that are buried under those streets?
Not 100% confident, but that was certainly looked at by CMPS, and it's been evaluated.
That was included in their review?
Yes.
Okay.
Can Duane Tryman put his stamp of approval?
He did, he was the one that gave it back this afternoon.
Move to approve.
Scott, was that you?
Nope, that was...
Ken?
Go for it.
Right ahead.
Very good. Just a note of thanks to the county commissioners and the city council and Mayor Turgeon as well, and she's had a fair amount of discussion with you, and so they've been good partners to work with in this process, and it's always helpful when three units of local government work together towards a reasonable goal, so it's good. Appreciate their efforts on their side of things. So all in favor to approve the development agreement as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, the agreement's adopted. Thank you, Jason. Thanks, Alex. Appreciate your work on that. I know you've had a number of conversations, some back and forth, and so appreciate those efforts, too.
Absolutely. Stronger together.
There you go.
That's right. Last item of business is usually reserved for Ms. Schwartz.
Lindsay made her screen really big, so I can...
No judging.
Yeah, no judging. Motion to suspend open to enter into closed meeting by roll call vote pursuant to Chapter 6.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, Sections 1, Legal Actions, Causes of Action or Litigation Involving a Public Governmental Body, 3, Hiring, Firing, Disciplining, or Promoting a Particular Employee, and 13, Individually Identifiable Personnel Records, and 14, Records Which Are Protected from Disclosure by Law.
Can I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lindsay. Action by roll call vote when you're ready, Stephanie?
Yes, Lindsay.
Yes.
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 Thank you.